States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, roll call.
Beal.
Here.
Brazil.
Here.
Conley.
Here.
Green.
Here.
And Stephanie, I know she wanted to be on remote.
She is on, but I'm trying to figure out how to get her on.
Okay. Okay, approval of agenda. Is there anyone who wishes to add or delete anything from this agenda? There are.
Well, so in eight three, is this the second final reading for the high policies? Or did we do that last time?
So last time was the first reading. This is the second and final reading of these high policies.
Okay, because in the, in the minutes, it shows that both things.
Oh, thank you for catching me.
Mistaken last time.
I didn't even notice.
Okay, may I have a motion for the approval of the agenda?
Move approve the agenda.
Second.
Roll call.
Beal.
Aye.
Brazil.
Aye.
Conley.
Aye.
Green.
Aye.
Stokes.
Okay, so this is public participation. We love this part. So I, I think we had two presentations. So who wishes to start?
I do have someone on the virtual screen that wants to talk.
Okay. Let's go forward with Shannon and Ted. So.
All right. Do you want us to stand or sit?
Well, I, I think just so that, no, not Neil.
And we'll be looking at the handout that I just gave to each of you, compliments of Ted.
Okay. Okay, so Ted, as I understand this, this is a partnership with the school district to carry on in a robust, vital way our adult career connection center, take it to another level. And I know that you and Shannon and Miriam have a lot of work in this, what, underpinning of a structural change. So with that being said, would you tell us about this?
Sure. So the MOU that you, that you have is the first two pages are just outlining what the agreement would look like between Community of Caring and the CCB School District. And basically, we would like to hire, it would be a full-time employee, 24 hours would be dedicated to the Adult Career Connection Center, and the other 16 would be dedicated to Habsburg Workforce Center activities at the AMC West facility. The piece that would be really critical for the Adult Career Connection Center would be, this person would be supervised under Shannon, and Shannon would actually also be working in concert with Annie, who would be dedicating, I believe, 16 of her hours to the Adult Career Connection Center. And the idea would be to create a highly structured plan that we can integrate a lot of different components to. We, as you know, at the Aspen Mine Center and AMC West, do a lot of case management with a lot of clients. And the goal is always to help them become goal-oriented, action-oriented, and sustainable. So a lot of times that includes, and probably more times than not includes, getting them connected to career opportunities that could help to increase their, their financial independence, eliminating debt and increasing the revenue, which is another kind of specialty of Shant. So she, she does a lot of financial help teaching with her clients. So the piece that I think we can really help to formalize is a more structured component so that we know that when adults in need of career guidance come into that center, we can really tie them into, and I wanted to mention this and they forgot to, but originally when, when the name was changed to the Adult Career Connection Center, I didn't know how I felt about that. The more Shannon and I were talking about that today, it's brilliant because that's exactly the component that will be more robust and more structured. So really connecting adults that are looking at expanding their career opportunities with a lot of different resources throughout the community. We're looking at tying them into independent business opportunities, credentialing for many different career opportunities. Some of that is happening now. We just need it to happen in a more structured and robust way, and the fact that we will have a dedicated 24-hour commitment to that through a new hire, and then Shannon overseeing that. Because I think Shan, one of Shannon's big, biggest gifts is being able to see a big picture and break it down into doable steps, actionable steps. And that is what she's been so brilliant at with, with our facility. But I think being able to give her oversight and a small portion of her salary would be funded through this MOU, but the biggest chunk would be for our 24-hour employee to be covered under this MOU. So that's in a nutshell what we're trying to do. The economic opportunity, economic development opportunity, small business opportunity, career development certifications, what am I forgetting? Apprenticeships, all of those things we know, and Shannon's had great success already in doing that through AMC West, through our partnerships over there. But I think that would just put it on steroids, and I can really see a huge growth in the ACCC. So that's in a nutshell what we're trying to do. And I think the fact that the partnership between us and the school district would become so much more intertwined, integrated, intentional, those are the things that I think would really launch this in a new trajectory.
Accommodation, working with Annie, myself, this other employee, really working on the town's economic development, including the housing push, and just putting it all together, getting employees up here to work, to build these houses that we'd like to build, getting people certified so we have trades up here, in addition to small business entrepreneurship. So many avenues I think that the, the three of us can do very well, and work for the city too, and their plans for their planning. So kind of putting it all together and trying to get people, whether it's in the daycare, whether it's in the school for teachers, and getting people raised up to do the jobs that we need in this town. And that would be my goal, and working with the Economic Development Corporation, the state economic development, getting them here and involved, and just a really robust thing where we're all kind of working together to make this happen.
Do you want to give an example of, I know you've had a pretty good success today. And just as an example.
The small business? We had a couple coming in a little while ago. They were wanting to start a new business. They've been clients with us for a while, very excited because they want to have like a makerspace art place, which is what the city was talking about needing, possibly in one of their buildings. So they come in, I already have the knowledge about that. We send them to the Small Business Development Center. They're already taking courses to get that business up and running with the small business plan. We're supporting them from the start, the thought of it all the way through, whether it's helping them pay for the fees or get the gas to go down there. But now, they're ready, they're ready, they're excited to be business owners. So that's kind of the direction that I want to see happen, and connecting them with the city planning men to make sure something can go in. That's just one of a few that we've had in the last few months that I really think that we could, the partnership would be excellent for our, not only our clients, but the whole town. And whether it's, you know, I don't know, what other ideas did I have? We sent, we sent, we sent two men up to the Colorado Road and Bridges Institute. They're going to spend three weeks up there getting trained in everything from OSHA to flagging, three weeks, then end up with the CDL. So then connecting them hopefully with the Alpass, or telekemy government. So those are the, we're thinking a little broader.
I think the synergy between Shannon and Annie, definitely, and then whoever this hire, I think Shannon and Annie know each other pretty well from housing partners and a lot of other, I think that would really help to create the synergy that's going to be greater with some of its partner. So that's, that's.
The other push was to get, if this would go through, we would have it covered from nine to six, five days a week, and one Saturday a month, which would really change. It would be open and available to the, the people when they need it. So I really like that piece. So it's not just during school hours. We would have said that we could do it on alternate hours. So that's a big deal. And then the marketing, I believe that the marketing's imperative for the school district at this time. I really want to show what, what the school district can do with what they've been given with the Adult Career Connection Center, having a really robust website that shows a lot of calendars and just a really nice blast to get people in and get people knowing what the school district can do with that.
I could add a comment. This was born out of the RISE grant. Remember, the RISE grant was a community-wide skills-to-employment program, starting as a pipeline from, you know, preschool, right straight on through to the community. And this is probably the piece that is ripe for a lot of attention. And again, the idea was to lift people out of poverty. And as you know, we've seen a lot of generational poverty. And studies are showing that when children's parents are involved in strong careers, not just jobs, and are, what, working towards getting licensures or, or credentials, bettering themselves, that the kids rise up to. That it, it again, it is what is pivotal to academic performance, is that, that family connector to aspiration that comes through passion to do the things that you really want to do in life. And so, you know, I, I think what we've seen in our community, it's about skilling, it's re-skilling and up-skilling. And I can think about when, what, just early on in the, in the RISE Center, when we made a partnership with the casinos for, to do the gambling 101, what, certification or whatever, licensure that went, and they came in and helped teach those classes. But we had several people who got that and automatically were able to take and raise their income by 20,000 a year, which was huge.
And I think what, what I can do or offer is that follow-through of having that data. Because I think what we don't have is that long-term data on how successful, what do they use, all of that. And with the Apricot system we use and some, another system like during Colorado, I think we could get that too.
And, and here is Dan's report about what our seniors have accomplished in licensures and certifications that is truly so impressive.
So just continuing that flow.
Yeah, and that's how I see it, and echoing a little bit of what Mary said. The RISE grant really did push us down a path. And I think it's, it's ones like this to remember that we have to continually cultivate, you know, when we started, otherwise it's going to go away. Like this seems like a, a natural outcome, you know, starting five years ago, you know, and, and, you know, it, it, the, the Adult Career Connection Center has been, you know, it's, it's working, but there's no reason it can't work better. There's no reason it can't grow and flourish. I think this is a natural outcome. And I think it deepens that, you know, the conversations that we always have about partnerships in the community. Another way to just continue that partnership, and we're already working together. And I would really like, if, if we were into this, I would really like to really deepen that, seniors and adult population. I mean, we have options of jumping ahead, but like, why not some evening classes in our construction trades program? Why not, you know, ways for adults in the community to get some of those same certifications that our high school students are getting? I think all of that is on the cusp, and this is a step towards that. You know, and, and I say that, Annie's done her job, but Annie can't do that by herself. You know, we need to grow the capacity of what's happening.
So by partnering, there would also be accessibility to grants I think that currently aren't available. That would be something definitely that would be a plus.
Sure. And going back to the data collection piece, so one of the things that, that Community of Caring learned a lesson over years and years and years and years, and Mary and I have had this conversation a lot, it's easy to measure outputs, it's easy to measure how many people are coming in, how many food boxes are going out, how many pieces of clothing are going out. The difficult part is measuring the actual impact and the outcomes. And, and that, I think, is one of the components that we'll be able to, because of Shannon's work on the Apricot system, which we can help track that, it will, it's a natural way to demonstrate the efficacy of the program so that you can more reliably get grants, other types of grants. And right now, that is critical of this second point, one that has to be one of, that's kind of.
I'm curious, what kind of skill set are you looking for in that third person?
You know, my, my thought would be is, we would bring another benefit to having the Aspen Mine, is that we would, we would search out volunteers that might be very well at teaching, vetting, teaching different trades, different skill sets. But it would be a person that could collaborate and make, facilitate those, those opportunities, like get the people involved that need to be, or able to research where I can get someone plugged in, and then connecting that person with the after. So it's more of a connector and facility than more than anything.
Outgoing network. And really, that would need to be what drives them, is the relationship-based components for partnerships, for working with clients individually, for the, the big picture out in the community piece as well as in the building, and, and putting those pieces together. So it would need to be somebody that has a lot of, that gives their energy through relationships. And, and that's.
Yeah, because that, that could make or break you.
Really looking at that. But I am excited to think, because we're, we're growing at the Aspen Mine in regards to volunteerism. We have a volunteer coordinator that's really seeking out all different types of volunteers. So people that are, are, know how to teach and want to teach something they know, so getting all of that together.
So this would be more than a stated curriculum. It would be based against individual needs for the people coming in.
Kind of like an IEP for adults.
I just wanted to make, because I was a little unclear on how that was all going to work.
It would be an unlimited tool that they, that they can draw from. And I think the connectivity, and that's the piece really that I've been blown away. I didn't realize how many, how many connections Shannon had outside of the community, like the Small Business Development Corporation, all of. So when we were talking about that before we came up tonight, I was really impressed with all of the things she's already been accessing. I think bringing that in, and again, Annie's, Annie's a community-oriented person. She knows the economic development side. She knows the politics in the community. And then from the school-based focus from her, I, I just feel like this is going to be something that could just.
Well, it just seems like a natural extension of the, the adult education program to me. I don't see that, I don't, I, I just, certain things like, for instance, um, what word did I say? Okay, for vocational and technical certifications, that would be set up for classes specifically for whatever it was, whether it's beverage, whether it's hospitality, whether it's, and then we would use the center for that reason. We would bring in teachers to, or people from that particular, you know.
Shannon was talking about utilizing volunteers. I, I know that, so, sorry to keep using examples from my own experience, but Judge Pete, when he was really committed to the,
the. Life skills.
Life skills and, and the drug rehab program. So he would bring in professionals from, who was a realtor and a, and a mental health professional and addiction specialist, all of these different components. But then he had a car salesman that, that wanted, or a mechanic to, and really teaching from a volunteer standpoint. People love it when you, when you recruit them for their knowledge base of what, of what their experiential knowledge was. And Pete was a master at that. So he had, he had attorney friends, judges, and all of those components too. And they'd come in and they'd teach a class, and, and it was for 10 or 12 individuals that were going through drugs. But it ended up being, having such this huge impact on their lives. And there's still conversations that I have with people that were really not in a good place back then, that ended up because of the volunteers that Pete recruited, ended up going, oh my gosh, I have, there's so much more that, that we could access. And so I think that's one of Shannon's ideas, being able to utilize volunteers in the community that could actually teach those types of career development skills, or bring in professions that they may not have been exposed to. So I think that's another thing.
And still doing, oh, yeah.
Case in point to you in what you're saying. So we did a points and time survey for our childcare, and to understand still the need that is present. And we did that at Crescent Days as well as the graduation of the preschool. And there was 25% of the respondents who said they were interested in career development in the childcare arena.
Working in the childcare center.
It blew us away.
Yeah, that kind, that's kind of startling.
Oh, yeah. And it's, and it again is one of those, those needs that are embedded in this community that, again, you know, if you tap into, then you don't always have this turnover in, in your head start, early head start, or.
This is what I always thought the child, or the, the adult education center was for, is exactly what you're saying here.
Yeah, and, and back to like, if there was something we, we couldn't accommodate here, it wouldn't mean that we wouldn't go out and actively find a place for them to learn that skill and to make that happen.
Okay, I like it.
Yeah.
And one other thing, proselytizing. But it is, again, it's, meets two of the performance objectives that we've cited in with Dan going forward this year. And obviously, the one I think about is the mill levy override. And I'm going to tell you, this will be a selling point. And it also is the, one of the selling points that we pass the 1% sales tax on. Again, the continuation of the RISE grant, what, trajectory.
And when do you go for that?
The mill levy override, we're going to go for in November.
November. So they'll be down, if this goes, goes this way, they'll be down in marketing and things that will help that.
Yeah, we're going to need that.
That would be the focus, you know, somewhat of the focus by November.
Any other questions from the board?
Well, my only question is, is this in our budget already?
So we'll be using proceeds from the 1% sales tax, simply because there will be an emphasis on seniors and recent graduates.
I think that's what we're using some of it for anyway, was.
Yeah, if the programs are also being offered to seniors and recent graduates, yes.
And there's still, still would be a big emphasis on building resumes, using AI to move that happen, you know, career development, career pathways, exploration. So we, all of that is part of it. There's a system called My Colora, My Colorado Journey. And we're already enrolled to be a participant in that. And, and so that, that, that is really robust in helping those seniors get all those things that they need more career development.
Well, thank you very much for the presentation. We will let you know tomorrow. Thank you, thank you. Drive safely. Okay. And we had another presentation?
Yeah. We have someone who would like a parent who would like to use their three minutes to share.
Okay.
Okay. So are you, are you on board? Can you hear us?
No, not yet.
Oh. And do we have a name?
Victoria Easterday.
Easterday?
Yes.
Okay.
Oh, okay. Okay, Victoria, you're ready to go.
Thank you, Victoria, for showing up online. You have three minutes to present.
Okay, thank you. Good evening, and thank you for the opportunity to speak. I'm here to respectfully advocate for my daughter Evelyn Easterday regarding the district's strict kindergarten cutoff policy. Evelyn misses the age cutoff by just two months, but she has consistently demonstrated strong academic readiness. She scored highly on both the Bracken Four and the Teaching Strategies Gold assessments that were provided by her teachers. Excuse me. On Teaching Strategies Gold, her scores range between 89.5% and 92.6%, depending on the scoring scale. These are exceptional results, especially considering that she experienced a difficult year, including the loss of both her grandfathers, which did impact her attendance this year, and still performed at a high level. Some background on me is I've also worked in early childhood education for eight and a half years. And from that experience, I know firsthand that readiness varies greatly by child. In fact, the very basis of early childhood education is the understanding that children develop at their own rate academically, socially, and emotionally. Evelyn has clearly demonstrated that she's ready to move forward. Her academic performance shows that she is thriving, and I believe that another year in preschool would not benefit her. I believe it would hold her back from continuing to grow and be challenged at the levels she's ready for. I've submitted documentation in the form of an email to all of your emails listed on the website that includes her Bracken Four results and her Teaching Strategies Gold assessment, provided by her teachers to support this request. I kindly ask the board to consider a more flexible approach to early kindergarten entry, especially for students like Evelyn who show that they're ready. Thank you for your time and consideration.
So we appreciate that you have presented to us. And obviously, in a public presentation, we are here to hear what you have to say, and your concerns, and what action you are recommending. However, because it is not based in a, the format of our agenda, we will not take action on this. What we will do, Victoria, is put your requ- What we will do, Victoria, is put your request to the administration. And the administration will contact you as to how they will proceed.
Okay, thank you. And I would also like to say that if Evelyn is required to complete another year of preschool, that I'm not advocating just for her, but for other students in our district who may be ready as well.
And I appreciate the fact of you bringing this to our attention. And obviously, flexibility is always a piece of performance excellence in regards to meeting the needs of our individual children. So again, we will give this deserved attention, and we will be back to you very quickly.
Thank you very much. Can you provide them with the email, the email listed for you guys? I did submit those three documents I mentioned.
And I did not receive this. I guess my thought would be that you would forward that email to our superintendent and our two principals, Tanya Copley. And again, we will consider your request and get to you quickly.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Again, thank you very much for bringing this to our attention. Thank you. Have a good evening.
You as well, thank you.
You're welcome. Do we have anybody else? Okay. Again, as board members, we're proud to sit in these seats. We are change agents, we have our hands on hope. And we are here in purpose and mind, united, to serve our children and our community. I wanted to bring something to your attention. Again, when things happen, we are family. And so a very tragic thing happened in Miriam's family yesterday, where her nephew drowned at the Pueblo Reservoir, and he left a wife and two young daughters. And so I would wish that you would keep them in your prayers. And again, this is a very hard, hard thing. Again, the reminder that that life is very vulnerable. It's a gift. Yeah, you're welcome. So moving on then, we have the reports.
I didn't have any questions other than, is there a way that we can get this chart thing that we can read in color or something? Even if it's sent to us, the composite scores?
And I do see that in...
Because I really like graphics.
Okay, in the packets, I see that there is a, going forward, that our board packets will be online, or what?
Yeah, they'll be sent to you digitally.
Digitally, sorry.
As a fragment to your emails. This is going to save a large sum of money at time for the district. And then you'll get to be able to see things in color without paying for color print.
Yeah, so I can see that coming. Obviously, congratulations on graduation, Crescent Days. A lot of year-end tie-ups, the graduation with preschool and what that looked like, the graduates going through, you know, the grade school. Just so many beautiful things. And again, Donna, your role in helping put together a lot of volunteers to help achieve this. Just so many things that make you want to bust... Bust out of your buttons. Yeah, somebody told me that they felt that there were 300.
There was 302.
At graduation. So again, and the biggest one I've seen in the six years. So, and again, so many people that were energized and joyful. It was really something.
It was really good.
And of course, Miriam, I see your report. But I was, I have to tell you, I was reminded that, yes, you're out of here, girl. So, anyway.
Last bit of rebellion.
You could have just put a "see ya."
No, we'll get you on this, but it won't be a pink slip.
Okay.
Okay.
Besides, we know where you live.
Yeah. Anybody who wants to bring something forward on these reports?
I would like to just congratulate the staff from both schools, from Head Start. I will, I have to say, I personally feel that this was such a successful year. But so many things were accomplished. And we have moved our school district forward in such a positive note. I just want to thank you all so very, very much for all that hard work. Because this didn't, this didn't just happen. So thank you very much.
And we made the paper, I should say, we, Miriam, I'm going to take and tell you right there in the Courier. So if you need a couple copies, ask me, because I kept a few. And then this really nice article that family takes a gamble on Cripple Creek and CCV schools and wins. And, oh, here, you can just take this.
Oh, this is, yeah, this is a great article.
And then... Yeah, it just came out on this last one. And again, J-Term, I, you know, Jayden went this morning. And when he come back home, both he and Chris, they said, oh, it was so good. It was, it was cool, Grandma, you know? So whatever they got into, it has cranked them up, and they're not on their phone.
Daisy, did you have anything you needed to share?
No, I just hope that I enjoyed the picture of your graduation.
Now, what's the...
I would, I would love to share, because Donna brought up this data. Please don't take this as any kind of an excuse or anything like that. But one of our big learning curves at Crescent School has been in the realm of English as a second language. And we also know that when we're looking at class sizes that are this small, how one or two kids can totally skip the English. So this year, we, at one point, had two bilingual students, one English student and six move in with absolutely no English. So when you throw those eight kiddos, excuse me, nine kiddos in the mix, just consider that when you're looking at some of this data, that the, you know, in first grade, we had 13 kids at the beginning of the year and 14 kids at the end of the year. Those weren't even necessarily just 13 plus one. That's, you know, a bit of a rearrangement of maybe a kiddo who left. And just consider that, how much things like that mess that up. And it was a big learning curve for all of our staff this year. We have not, in several years, had to really consider the needs of English as a second language learners. And to have, for us, you know, nine, that's almost 10% of our kids. That's, that was a big learning curve.
Well, I think all of us realize that percentiles in our district really don't mean a whole lot. It's all, because it's, our classrooms are so small, it's the individual student that comes.
And it's something that we're really looking at going forward, is how do we best serve not just these students? Because one of the things we also found was that, how do we serve their families? How do we get something so simple as, we have a two-hour delay to those families whose parents are limited in English? So it's been a big learning curve this year.
So in 2004, we were faced with this when Ames moved in as a contractor for the mine. And so Community of Caring ended up putting together an AmeriCorps Promise Fellow who just addressed English as a second language with our children and our families as, again, this connector. And it was Becky Frank. And back then, she was given a stipend for each year that she put in. And she went, used those monies, and it propelled her to get her bachelor's degree. And she now is the new Park and Rec Director for the City of Cripple Creek. So there is this background that I can see that this is an opportunity for, again, more collaboration. Again, it was a very exciting time for us when we did that.
Pretty busy girl.
But again, there are other people that are on the ground floor that this opportunity will end up being a point that will lift them up into maybe, like Becky, a career. It's a start, so. Okay, then moving on. Next is the new business, so the consent agenda. I hear that you want to amend the minutes. Stanley?
Yeah, that's correct.
Stanley, I don't see where you're, what you're referring to.
Thank you, thank you.
Bye, guys.
Let me see.
Maybe I'm just confused on the way that it's... Motion to approve the first reading of I-Policies for revision, full and... Motion to approve the second and final reading of I-Policies for removal by agreeing second advice, Stokes.
Are you seeing that in the May minutes?
Yeah, in tab three on the second page, about halfway down, right underneath the first reading of I-Policies for revision.
Motion to approve first reading.
Oh, I see. It's, the title is Motion to Approve First Reading of I-Policies. And then it says Motion to approve the second and final reading of I-Policies. It's all in the same sentence.
Oh, okay, thank you.
I missed it.
That's just a typo, so, so just remove that, yeah.
So just be amended to first reading.
And so these policies are being removed, is that, is that the view?
No, these policies are being revised by Caspi's legal team. And so the proposal is to take out all of the outdated policies and replace them with the new policies.
So can you amend the motion?
I'll make a motion to amend the minutes removing the motion to approve the second and final reading of I-Policies for revision.
So that, what I need you to do is to take and say to approve the consent agenda with the suggested amendments to the minutes.
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda with the corrections as noted.
Yes, perfect, to the minutes, okay. Roll call? Aye.
Aye.
Okay, the next...
I'm here.
Okay, did you say...
Hi.
Okay, great, welcome, Stephanie, we're glad to hear your voice.
I've been here the whole time, just, the other side was muted, so I couldn't talk.
Oh, okay, is it true silence is golden?
What color is your hair this week, Stephanie?
Okay, next on the agenda is approval of April 2025 payables and payroll. May I have a motion?
We approve April 2025 payables and payroll.
A second?
A second, ma'am.
Okay, roll call? Aye.
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 Okay, then this is the second and final reading of I-Policies for revision. H-H-A-M-A. I don't know if we need to go through all of them or not.
I think we can just, since it's the second and final reading, the policy that's listed.
Okay, so may I have a motion?
I'll have a, make a motion to agree to the second and final reading of I-Policies that have been revised.
May I have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, roll call? Aye.
Aye.
No. No, nay.
Aye.
Okay, next is approval of athletic directors and HR payroll contract. Are there any questions? Okay, may I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the athletic director and HR payroll contract.
Second?
I'll second.
Okay, roll call? Aye.
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 Okay, approval of 2025-26 budget and salary schedule.
I'll make a motion to approve the budget and salary schedule.
Okay, second?
I'll second.
Okay, roll call? Aye.
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 Okay, next is approval to CCV ST CLD service contract.
So that's the contract that we looked at during the work session. I don't believe we're in a place where it can be approved.
Should I table that till the next meeting?
Yeah, you wish to make that motion?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to table the CCV Southern Teller County Library District Service Contract till the next meeting.
I'll second that.
Okay, roll call? Aye.
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 Okay, next is approval of the 25-26 superintendent performance objectives.
I move we approve the 25-26 superintendent performance objective.
I'll second that.
Roll call? Aye.
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 Okay, approval of the 25-26 regular board meeting dates.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Did I get all the comment on that?
Sure, yes, it is.
I would like the board to consider, and I don't know if it would affect this or not, I don't know the history of board meetings timing-wise, and I would wonder if the board would consider having them held at five o'clock as opposed to 6:00 p.m. in order to hopefully get more community engagement as well as more engagement from faculty and staff. When I invite the faculty and staff to table for board meetings, a lot of times they don't want to stick around until 6:00 a.m. or 6:00 p.m. I wonder approving the board meeting, and how early is something that the board would consider?
I wouldn't have the objection.
And I think that, again, the motivation and the rationale for the change is certainly part of your performance objective. It's, again, more community engagement. So I'd see that. And I can see that I've been around to some different meetings where they kind of have a different format in terms of the inclusion of the issues that are actually on the board agenda. And the agenda just becomes, when the board meets, it's just perfunctory, just like how we've gone through these last six items. It's just ding, 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 and it's all done, you know? So with that consideration, is there a board member who wishes to put forward a motion with that amendment?
I think we need to ask, Stephanie has the least flexible schedule of all of us. She's got children.
Five o'clock is good for me.
Does that work? Okay.
That was my only concern with that. And it's not really a concern, I don't have an issue with it by any means, but... but we generally have a work session almost, almost every time, so that's going to bring us in here four o'clock rather than five. So, but it doesn't really, you know, I don't have a problem with that, I just wanted to bring that up.
But, if you see some of the other formats for board meetings, that it, that, the work session thing is brought in, you know, into that piece. But, again, I just, the model probably can be explored a little bit to have more flexibility. Okay, so, can I have a motion then?
My, I'm sorry, my staff meetings, which I run on every other Monday, run 4:15 to 5:15. Consider like 5:15?
Could you end up doing some, a different day, or?
We could, right now, we just run all of our meetings on Mondays, and that way, when we run our after-school clubs, our after-school club don't run on Mondays, so that everybody can get meetings. So, that's just, that's how, I mean, I can, I will find a way around.
Yeah, I was going to ask, how inconvenient would this be for you, Tonya?
Well, it would, it would mean that ours, by the time we get started on our staff meetings, and then, if we were to still have them that day, and then break with enough time to be here at 5:00, we'd get half an hour staff meetings.
And, again, I'm just thinking that if you do this for the public, it is easy to take and put out 5:00 because it's rememberable, where 5:15, and then that kind of can get pushed all over the place. You know, that's, that's my thought on it. I, but if, if, wonder if we just try it.
Would we be able to change the times, reset the date, so we're able to be flexible about the times as we try it?
Typically, we want to release these dates and times with only changes made in the event, right? Like we did for Mary. We don't want to make a regular habit of doing that. But with the calendar and the early release on Thursday, I just feel like we could probably figure it out if everyone is a little bit more flexible. But I do agree that 5:00 p.m. is a little more memorable than 5:15.
Yeah, I think we just try it and then ask for, you know, what you might explore, Tonya, on your side in terms of how you can gather your staff.
So, I'll.
And, again, once a month, and you say you have them every other week. So, maybe just if it's not the week that the board meeting's on.
Do like a second and fourth?
Yeah.
Well, we also, because we also have to figure in the safety and security meetings and the DAC meetings, because the DAC meetings, those are also on Mondays.
Okay.
That's why we're trying to, we'll figure something out.
We appreciate your forbearance, and if this doesn't work, then, yeah. Okay, may I have a motion? Did I have, I did have a motion.
Not yet.
Okay, may I have a motion?
I move we set our regular meeting schedule for, instead of 6:00 to 5:00 p.m.
With the, with, with the approval of the stated meeting dates?
Yeah.
Okay, may I have a second?
I'll second that.
Roll call? Aye.
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 Okay, the next is approval of electronic board packets. So, may I have a motion for that?
I'm just curious about that, or what are we going to flip to while we're?
Where are we going to put our notes? Because that's how I go back and look.
Well, I'm thinking that if you get an electronic packet, I know how we do it with Community of Caring, they get an electronic packet, and they, a lot of times, have their own printers, and they print them off and bring them to the board meeting. And then, sometimes, we have additional supplements, like what we did today, that are present.
Yeah, because I'm very much visual, read on it, write on it, and then.
Also seen it done where the bulk of it is electronic, but then there is an agenda with the agenda items for taking notes as well.
Yeah.
And I think the impetus for this comes back to the amount of money.
Even a buck.
Just spending of these paper products, and also just get recycled. And the buying, and the time to put it together.
I got a laptop, so I don't care, that's what I.
It's an economic thing, is where it's coming from.
I think it could be the agenda, and we'll bring back out the note packs.
Okay, okay, so, may I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve or accept the electronic board packets.
I'll second.
Okay, roll call? Aye.
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 The next is the approval of the workman's comp carrier, carrier pinnacle.
I guess I was going to tell you why it's increased.
We have more claims, right?
Yeah, usually what they do is they take the, what they call is the, and they average it out of our last years. And you see F is still on there, and we had a lot of claims. So, that was part of the reason why it went up in increase. Went from 1.35 to 1.56. With all those claims, it's a workman's comp, which is showing, and it's the third year. That'll fall off after this year.
Any other questions for Kathy? May I have a motion then?
I'll make a motion to approve pinnacle as our insurer.
Second?
I'll second.
Roll call? Aye.
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 Okay, next is the approval of the MOU CCB School District and Community of Caring.
I'll make a motion to approve that.
Okay, may I have a second?
I'll second that.
Roll call? I'm going to recuse myself. Okay. Next?
Aye.
There's no reason I should recuse myself, is there? I vote aye, or yes?
Okay.
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, thank you. I, I just see this is a tremendous change. It really, I'm tickled, somewhat emotional. Thank you. Next is the approval of non-renew K-12 accounting contract for 2025-26. Would you speak to that?
I'm going to ask that this be tabled. We were not pleased with the transition between Charlotte leaving and the new business manager being appointed to the school district. However, the contract that we are in requires us to provide 90 days' notice to K-12 prior to terminating it, so the contract has rolled over. We were not within that 90-day window, and we hope that, we have Amalia joining us, she is the new business manager. We are hearing wonderful things about her and her competency, and so, at this time, we will hope that it's a good fit and things continue to work well. We started on a plan earlier today to ensure things don't get missed, and we're all on the same page and better organized. So, I'm going to ask that that be tabled for the time being, possibly revisited later in.
Is it required to give 90 days' notice also?
Is Amalia a paid employee of K-12?
Yes.
She's with, okay.
Yes, I am, can you hear me?
Yes, we can, thank you very much for tuning in.
Yes, really quick, like 30 seconds introduction, I'm Amalia Castaneda. I've been working for school district for about 17 years. Denver Public Schools, Mapleton, Adams Club, Adams 14, and hopefully, if you still keep us, I'm looking forward to work with you.
Thank you very much. So, at this point, may I have a motion to table this?
I'll make a motion to table.
Second.
Roll call? Aye.
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 Okay, next is the approval of the, what is it?
SIT-SEP.
SIT-SEP Insurance Renewal. You have a motion?
I move we approve the SIT-PET insurance renewal as written.
Second?
Yeah, I'll second that.
Roll call? Aye.
Aye.
Conley.
Aye.
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 Okay, then, next is moving into informational. So, BOC's update, Donna and Miriam.
We went through the process of getting the at-large member chosen, and that person will be Amy Cantor. She is, she lives in Wyndham Park, she's new to Teller County. She has an extensive education background and has a child with a disability, and she will start on August. I will say, we had outstanding applicants for that position. We could have literally thrown a dart and gotten a good candidate.
Good. It was refreshing.
Anything else?
Really beyond that, we're just looking at the IDEA funds and making some changes to possibly where we're filling certain things at, because there was a surplus of funds that we thought were going to be spent that worked. So, we're just working on cleaning that budget up, discussing the, who's going to handle the finances for the BOCs, the newly restructured BOCs moving forward, and then really just getting, I mean, Marcy Palmer is leaving, so Katie Uberoff is the new executive director. Really just that transition piece, right? New superintendents, new business managers, a new board. And so, there's two meetings this week that I'll be attending to work through those things.
Do you think we'll make the July 1 budget deadline?
Again, thank you, Miriam, for all the efforts that have been put forward with this. I'm sure that this has been in the realm of headaches. But also, the role that you've played in regards to what? Renewal in the RE2 school district with, again, some change agents that are trying to move the needle in terms of their district going forward with some of the barriers and challenges that they've faced. And I know that you've been behind the scenes with a lot of wisdom and expertise, and, again, God bless you for that time, and I'm sure that they're going to reap the benefits of your knowledge. Yes, really. You know, again, change agents. Next is, on here, is board attended events. So, I, you know, don't really see anything there, but I don't, I, I, if we're going to have a special session meeting in June, I, I would like to maybe cite that in now. I know that the 23rd is not going to work for Donna, and so, and if it turned out to be a Monday, so what do those Mondays look like? And, and what do you see it would be best? I don't want to cut into any kind of vacation times or personal times, but forget that now that you're superintendent. Soon, though. I, I don't, I think there's a blurred line here. But, anyway, just what, what would be good? I, I do think we're going to need to do this, especially with the Mill Levy override. I, I don't see that. And then, if we talk about the library thing, I'd just as soon have that distilled also.
Yeah, so, we are going to get them the revised MOU by June 11th, obviously, then their board would vote on it on June 11th. So, are we looking at the week of the 16th? Or are we going to try to pull something together on like the 12th or 13th?
I would say the 16th.
The 16th?
16th would be good for me.
Okay, let me write that.
I can do the 16th, but it has to be after 4:00.
After 4:00, okay.
Do we want to do it a little bit earlier, do we want to do like 4:30?
4:30? Would 4:30 work for you, Stephanie?
Yes.
So, 4:30 to 16th? Will that work for you guys?
I'm good.
4:30 p.m.
16th.
Are you going to send us out an invite, Miriam?
No. Okay.
I have a question on the next one. On the sales taxing?
Yeah.
Do we have a comparison for April of what is board's sales tax taken?
I don't remember, I didn't save that information, it was in the last board packet.
Well, that was, wasn't for April, though. That was January, February, March, it was down considerably each month.
Yeah.
I'm wondering if the trend is continuing.
And I think Community of Caring's, ours went up, so I, I just can't remember. I, I would just have to look.
Surely, we can find out, right?
Yeah, I think that.
I'm just, that really concerns me with income for the year.
Yeah.
Because the, some of the restaurants in town are suffering. So, that tells me people aren't up here spending money.
Well, some say too, it's because Chaminet has completed the major part of any of their renovations, so that, you know, sales tax for building materials and acquisition of their furniture, et cetera, was all being run through the city.
Because it's cheaper.
Yeah, so, I, I don't know if that's what's explainable, but I, is it Monique or Monica? Monica, she can tell you. Next, then, is Finance Department MLO, Mill Levy override, so I think that's.
Yeah, let me give you all some updates. So, we were able to meet with, well, the comments? Yes, from Kutaq Rock. They were suggested to us by RBC Capital. It was a good meeting, he kind of went over some things, just an overview of the process. In front of you, you will see a timeline on one side. At the top, it's going to say Kutaq Rock, timeline for November 4th, 2025 election. On the back is the draft ballot language. And so, this is just a starting point for all of us, really, to, if we want to make any revisions to the ballot language, if we have any questions or concerns about the timeline. He did recommend that we do start garnering some support or feeling throughout the community, possibly a survey, maybe just some information, holding a stakeholder engagement. And, you know, these things, ideally, the more you kind of do before you make that final approval and announcement in a board meeting, then the more involvement you all can have because it's the Fair Practices Campaign Act. The Fair Campaign Practices Act hasn't kicked in yet, right? Once that kicks in, obviously, we can't use any type of disparate resources or anything to host some of these events or spread the word, but, so those are the recommendations. I would say we maybe start like we did last time. But, so those are the recommendations. I would say we maybe start, like we did last time, with the 1% sales tax and have a stakeholder-
Yeah.
Yeah.
And I think that would be great, because it always puts out, you know, what the elephants are in the room.
Yeah.
You know, and right now, it's kinda odd, because there's quite a bit of doom and gloom. And a lot of it's economic insecurities and, yeah, unpredictability, you know? Are we gonna go to war tomorrow? You know, a lot of things.
And so, yeah, so thinking of dates and who we might invite and what that event would entail, and possibly using some of these upcoming events in the community to kind of start talking it up. You know, of course, not asking for votes, right, but just sharing what our intentions are.
The key is to get people talking about it.
Yeah.
And the more you get them talking about it, especially in our community, believe me, it won't take long before it'll be through the whole community. You've just gotta get them started.
Well, we've gotta have the buy-in from the outlying areas.
Yes.
Because the city's not gonna be able to carry it.
Well, and the key is, is that without increasing the tax rate, right? So we're not increasing anything in order to do this, but the impact will be significant.
And, and that's the big message. We're not, you know, we're not asking for more. We're just asking to take it, continue. Yeah, that, yeah. Yeah.
Yeah, if you guys can think of dates and maybe let us know, so I can get Patricia Bates and see if she would be available to do the, do that for us for stakeholders.
Yeah, or something sort of refreshments by culinary, yeah.
I think it worked really well when we did that last time. Just had a few players in from different areas that are very, yeah, hockey.
I think the 16th would be time enough for us to have a strategy. Don't you think?
And have the language reviewed before we-
Pardon?
And review the language before then, and then take it as well.
Yeah, again, if we come in on the 16th, prepared to, you know, move it on down the road. And obviously, we're not neophytes. I mean, that 1% sales tax, kinda, we cut our teeth on it. So I kinda feel like, you know, yeah, this, we can get this going. Yeah, I mean, we got a few ideas under our belt that were successful. I certainly know that-
Make sure you get permission from code enforcement before you go wild, okay?
No, I'm gonna just, I'm not doing that. I'm gonna take and just have those big semis of the boys, and they're just, you know, it's a different rule when you have the semis. Really, and again, people wanna see something big. What is it? Go big or go home?
That's right.
Yeah. Okay, can I have a motion for adjournment?
I have one other-
Oh, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, man.
That's all right.
I have one thing that I'd like to share, so I need to change hats here for a minute.
Board attendant-
Who put this hat on? Mary Fields. As a representative and duly-appointed representative, longstanding of the Two-Mon High Club, we would like to thank you very much for your help and participation over the years in the historic release of the donkeys.
You guys knew I had something to do with the asses, didn't you?
Mary doesn't tell you everything she does.
Well, thank you.
And we would like to present you with this lovely gift bag.
Oh, perfect. Oh, this is, thank you very much. I'm honored.
I can take that.
Oh, that is so adorable.
Oh, yes, and I have this big Christmas tree made out of a sonotube, sonotube, that, again, it was the one year that we celebrated the donkeys as the theme in, in Christmas. So I, I have a place for this donkey on that tree.
Thank you.
Along with a lot of other ones.
Can't tell you how much we appreciate you.
Oh, I'm glad, but, yeah. It's just knowing all these guys.
Our beasts like it.
Okay, okay, so with that, can I have a motion to adjourn?
Can I ask one question?
Sure.
So, we talked about the, the thing we're trying to do there at the end, but as far as getting new board members to, how soon can they start?
Well, 67 days before.
67 days before the elections?
Yeah.
They have to register at 67 days before the election?
Number one, they, they have to run their petitions in August. Yes, and they, it depends on how many are in the district, but it's, again, and the biggest problem what I've seen is, is eligibility. So number one, they've gotta take and be a registered voter for a year. And, and so that disqualified a really good candidate a year or two ago. And then they need to know where they exist and what district they're in. So like, my district is not the City of Victor. Mine is that area around Victor. You know, Goldfield and, and like where we live outside of town, and down the Phantom, out towards Skagway, et cetera. So, and obviously, I'm gonna go off the board. And so I have talked with three different individuals about whether they might run for my spot. So I, I think, again, what we're seeing is three board members are gonna go off, or they're going to take a run again.
Do we have to notify in July of that, too, out of school board elections?
Yes, yes, in the election time line.
Okay.
If I pull up in like September, thank you, yeah.
Yeah, that'd be great.
Yeah, and again, I think it's really important, you know, that we look for strong, strong people. I think too, with Dan's suggestion of, of meeting earlier, we'll bring, again, more people that, that might say, oh, this wouldn't be such a hard deal, is serving in this capacity. And, you know, because a lot of people are intimidated, you know, about what this role might look like. So what I've done is, I've done that, and I don't know, we have any of those extra copies, or Casby might have some extra copies, you know, the, the Roles and Responsibilities Leadership Book? That leadership book, I'm gonna tell you, is kind of the ticket to give to prospective candidates. Because in it, it really pumps you up as to, you know, the role in terms of improving the quality of life, not only in your district, but in your community. It's, again, it's kind of the how-to piece. I, that's what I've done. I've given that book to, to people.
Yeah, no, it's, it's great. It's a great resource. They do typically charge for them, but they are online in digital format, so.
Well, what I was thinking that, I don't, I didn't really like the one they just gave out last December, which was their new edition.
Yeah.
I liked their old edition. Do they have any, I mean, do they have any leftovers? Can we just ask them for that? Because it worked great.
I know, but we should probably see if anything has changed legally, and that's why they put-
Oh, maybe so. I didn't think about that. I was just looking at, you know-
And that everybody keeps everything.
Yeah. So I don't know.
I'll ask. I'll find out.
Well, I gave the old ones out. So now, is there a motion for adjournment? Or do you guys just wanna stay and visit?
I'd move to adjourn, right?
A second?
I'll second that.
Okay, roll call? Aye.
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 Hey, thanks, Stephanie.